The first order of business is application A 2001 of Jose and Dacilio Lara relative to 24 Newbury Street. Appeal of the decision of the building inspector. The attorney for the applicant attorney Simeone has requested a continuance until next month until the board issues its decision from last month. Question comes on continuing. Roll call. Al, the question is to continue the first application. Okay, yes. Mr. Bichilli votes yes to continue. Mr. DeAngelo?
Yes.
Yes, to continue. Uh, Mr. Lopes is absent at the moment. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this matter is continued until June 24th, I believe.
Yes, that's the last Wednesday in the month, June 24th.
4:00 PM. Uh, the next skipping the regular order of business down to A 2005. This is the application of RFI Development requesting minimum lot frontage variance on Lot 51 Roosevelt Street. Parking variance on Lot 52 Roosevelt Street. Uh, should we hold this one for Arthur?
I believe so, yes.
All right.
John, I'm here.
Arthur's on board?
I'm here, John.
Oh, John Lopes is on. Okay. The uh, the last matter, uh, John, was to continue the first application at the request of their attorney to next month.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Uh, yes, okay, so that was application A 2001 to continue. Is, is Arthur on, also on, uh, Cushman Avenue also?
Yes, I believe so, both of those.
Both of those. How about skipping down to A 2006? Marshand Fowler Avenue.
Okay. A moment.
There's a problem getting onto the link, so that might be why Arthur's not getting in. It took me a little bit to get on to.
This is application A 2006. William and Brenda Marshand, 68 Fowler Avenue requesting front and side yard setback to construct an eight foot by 12 foot exterior deck on the front of the dwelling located at 68 Fowler Ave- Fowler Avenue in Revere. Proponents? The applicant wish to speak?
No, I mean, if there's anything I can do to, you know, it's just a front little deck, a little porch I want to put on, that's all.
Now, for the record, um, the ward counselor, John Powers, has no issues with this. The director butters also have no issues with this.
Correct.
So for the record, um, Steve Colometto, the director butter, and Mrs. Haley's the other butter, correct?
Yes, Carol Haney.
Carol Haney, I'm sorry.
Yep, it's okay, yep.
So I asked for a motion to approve.
Any, any opponents?
Oh, I'm sorry, any opponents on, yeah. I don't see anybody on, online here, John, that's an opponent.
Hearing and seeing none. Question comes on granting the relief requested by Mr. Marshant at 68 Fowler Avenue. Al, you in favor of this one?
Roll call.
Yes. Mr. Bichilli votes yes. Mr. DeAngelo?
Sure, why not?
Yes. Mr. Lopes?
I'm with the ward council, yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted. Um, so we revert back to the regular order of business. We still want to wait, are you checking with Arthur?
Um, I'm on the phone with Arthur. One moment, please, I'm on the phone with Arthur.
Bill, you'll be receiving a decision in the mail. It has to wait a certain number of days under appeal. And at the conclusion of the appeal, we, um, uh, you can come in, well, getting into the city clerk's offices, uh, it's going to be a problem for a while to pick up a decision to record it. So, um, you'll be receiving, um, the decision in the mail.
Okay.
And, uh, it's going to be a little tricky for a while until we can get City Hall back up and operating to be able to provide you with the documentation.
I have a question, could, could I start this, say, in a couple of weeks, even though I need a permit? I know I need a permit showing in the window, but I've been approved, so could I start it, say, in a couple of weeks?
The law states that you start at your own peril, but if you start, um, beyond the 20-day appeal period after the decision is issued.
Okay.
A problem.
All right.
But we'll try to expedite it as fast as we can.
Thank you.
Anything on Arthur?
Um, I, Arthur is, would like, um, to put on record that he is opposed to vote, um, items in his ward. Um, the applicant's put out, um, for a continuance to speak to the ward counselor, but he stated that he's opposed to it. Um, and he said nobody's reached out to him, so Randall, um, you could ask for a continuance, um, so that you could have the opportunity to speak to the ward counselor. Arthur Guanasso? John, you want to take up calendar item number two? The 2003?
Okay.
And then we can, um, see if he wants to ask for a continuance?
Uh, um, I'm, um, I just wanted to say, um, what was the, uh, what, what did I actually need?
I didn't do.
Oh, what didn't I do, I'm sorry?
You submitted the plan, so you submitted the plans. He's not, uh, the ward council is saying he's not in favor of the variances that you're requesting. You have the side yard and you have the height variance, am I correct, John?
Correct.
Is, may I ask you, if we, we, uh, just seek a side yard or not a height, a height must be 30 then, right?
Depending on the total square footage of the site, yes. How, how big is the lot?
Uh, 90, it's, hold on. Yeah, it's right there, it is uh, 9,110.
Okay, let me just look at the site plan review letter.
Before we go.
Right.
If I stand corrected, the variances, it was not by height, but the board wanted to see it. The, the variances that, uh, the site plan review found, uh, at issue was a minimum side yard setback requirement of 10 feet.
Right.
And a minimum front yard setback requirement of 20 feet. So that those are the two issues. Um, I, I think what the chairman is suggesting to you, that give a call to the ward counselor, explain to him what you're doing, and, um, come back at the next meeting. But we'll open the meeting, right, we'll open the hearing right now. This is application A 2003 of Randolph Taylor, 183 Cushman Avenue, Revere, requesting front and side yard setback variances to enable the appellant to construct a 16-foot in width by 24-foot in length garage with a second story addition over the proposed garage over the existing single-family dwelling on Lot 14 at 183 Cushman Avenue in Revere. And Randolph Taylor is the, uh, proponent.
Is there any other proponents being in hearing that oppose that side of the hearing? Are there any opponents? The ward counselor is on record as being opposed. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on 183 Cushman Avenue?
None.
Hearing then, I'll close that side of the hearing. Does the applicant wish to continue or does he want us to vote on this tonight?
Uh, continuance.
Okay, there is a request for continuance. John, is that a motion that needs to go out?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Al, there's a request for a continuance on this. Is that all right? Al?
Al.
Al? One, one moment. Technical problems.
Motion to continue?
Ask. I mean, because of the addition 20 feet? No. I don't think we.
They got your back again? This, this is, uh, the second application, Randolph Taylor, uh, request for continuance. Yes, okay. Mr. Bichilli votes yes on the continuance. Mr. DeAngelo?
Yes.
Yes, on the continuance, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, on the continuance, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, for a continuance to June 24th, 4 o'clock.
Ask a question, if you can.
Yes, is there a question?
Yes, that front yard setback, our garage, which is the new part, is, uh, I think over 20 feet from the front yard setback, and there's nothing else there other than what exists, you know, that comes closer to the curb than our proposed front.
Uh, let me look at your plan. Uh, the proposed garage is, uh, I'll look at the site plan review letter again, because that's what we go on.
Yep.
I, I do see that your plot plan says on the, uh, even on the existing structure, it's 20.5 and 20.3 feet back.
Yep.
And even on the proposed garage, it has no, there's no measurement here.
Right, but it's over that 21 foot left to right, you know, if I feel that.
I agree with that.
And there's nothing else on the front that we're proposing.
It's so, I'll have to check with the site plan review committee on that, why they brought that up. Uh, was there another set of plans that they saw that?
No. The footprint has always been the same. We've just more developed, you know, for the height. And, and I think we're, we're compliant because of our lot size to be at 31 foot.
Right.
Okay.
Right, and the only thing would be the side yard. I, I'm going to have to, in the interim, check with site plan review and why they brought that, uh, front yard setback issue up. So that would be.
The only thing I can think, the only thing I can think of, and I probably, is, we put a deck, a front deck that is flush to the exist, the current bump out towards the curb.
It doesn't show that on this plan.
It, it shows it on A1.
Oh, the, the hash marks?
No. See just, you know, where the front porch is labeled on A1?
I'm just looking at the plot plan.
No, on the plot plan, it probably isn't there, but it's, it is flush with the current setback, which would be 20.5.
That's a, a front deck in front of the garage?
Nope, nope, on the opposite side. See where that bump out is, and the stairway comes up? It's in that notch to the left.
Um, but I don't really see it.
On the site plan? We'll clarify that then.
Yeah, well, well, I think I, you should send in that copy, so I know what I'm talking to site plan review about. Because they're going to be talking to something else.
A copy of the site plan or the site plan review?
Well, I have the site plan review letter where they're showing, uh, front yard setback issue.
I know, but we're 20, I don't see where or why.
Okay, I'll ask them.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And so we're going to continue this to the 24th, that's 4, and try to resolve this. And I think, uh, what is being suggested to you is that, um, you reach out to Arthur Guanasso, the counselor that represents that ward.
Okay, that's very good, we will do.
Um, I'm sorry, what's his name? I'm writing it down now as we speak.
Arthur Guanasso.
Okay.
If you look on revere.org, you can find out all his contact information for Ward 3.
Perfect.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have to do a roll call on that, John?
Yes. The application is application A 2005. RFI Development requesting minimum front, lot frontage variance on Lot 51 Roosevelt Street. Parking variance on Lot 52 Roosevelt Street. Special permits for Lot 51 Roosevelt Street to construct a single-family dwelling on Lot 51 Roosevelt Street. The attorney for the applicant has emailed me requesting a continuance to June 24th.
Is the, is the applicant, uh, the attorney on line here?
I don't know.
I don't see him online here.
He was, he sent me an email, he was provided with the link.
Okay, because the ward counselor is, um, definitely opposed. We have, uh, another opponent in the audience, and I believe that there were a few that were going to be mailing in, um, their opposition, John. Did you receive anything?
No, remember, City Hall is closed, lot of the mail doesn't get forwarded on.
There's six residents in that area, that area that are opposed to it, director butters.
And did they send anything in, or?
Yeah, they sent it in, like John said, you're probably not going to get it.
Is that Ralph on the line there with us? Yeah, yeah, all right. So we have Ralph in opposition. Arthur Guanasso is in opposition?
Yes. The other problem with the street now is very limited parking, it's parking only on one side of the street now.
Six, six, are these six, uh, director butters, uh, neighborhooders?
Yeah, neighborhooders, there's, there's totally, only a total of like six houses on the street, on the, on that head, right near, near the street, because it, it, uh, is next door to the school.
Okay.
Well, John, I would like to formally, um, state that they need to send something, and Ashley has been in the office, so she would forward anything on to us. Um, I, in, in speaking to her, I don't believe there's anything that's been received. Um, so I would ask that we continue, but we need to have something from these abutters that are opposed. Um, we can't, and that, no offense, but we can't just take the word of one person.
The counselor, the counselor has stated it, he's had them, presented it.
The counselor is opposed, but hasn't stated any other names, so.
Yeah, he's, he's the one that said the neighborhood is opposed to it. I'm just kidding, because he can't be on the phone.
Alrighty, um, so there is a request to continue here, um, I believe one of his last comments, Corey was stating, is he was trying to set up a meeting with the, um, the abutters and the neighborhood. I don't know how he's going to do that unless he does something with Zoom and sends something out by mail to the abutters, but that's his request.
This is the second, this would be the second continuance.
What's the wish of the members? Does any of the members wish to continue this, or do they want to take it up this evening?
Oh, God.
I think Arthur Guanasso has arrived.
Yeah, I gave him the link, a different way to get in.
John, Arthur's on. Okay. I just let you know.
John, for the record, I don't have, uh, that tool, 05. The RFI Development.
That was because it was continued from the last meeting.
Right. Right, so there's no paperwork on it?
No, I, it's hard enough to get, get what I can get out of City Hall as it is.
Okay, I see.
And, uh, this, this was a, a whole series of variance requests.
Right, I remember it.
Yeah.
I believe Corey is going to try to get on in a moment. Um, so the ward counselor is here as well.
Right, Arthur's on, yeah. As I mentioned, City Hall, uh, the building for, is going to open on Monday for, uh, city officials only. The public won't be allowed to enter the building until the, the public health sanitation procedures are in place and all of the, um, employees have filled out their required, uh, uh, sanitation, uh, documents. So the building will be, uh, uh, classed on a sanitation point of view. And then I think sometime in July, the building may open to the public, and we'll probably be able to normalize relations after that.
Okay, if we can just give a moment and see if, um, the attorney for that is going to be coming on.
We put him into our system, so he should be able to enter with relative ease. Al, did somebody communicate with Corey Rhodes directly?
He said he's attempting to try to sign in.
Why don't you just call him on the phone and see if you can, whatever he says, um.
Well, he's asking for a continuance, you don't understand why he couldn't get a continuance. I said there are people that are opposed to it. The ward counselor and there are other sisters that are opposed to this.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Counselor Arthur Guanasso, uh, and this issue has been ongoing for several months now. I think we've deliberated long enough to make a determination. Uh, this continuing, continuing stuff, uh, they know the feeling and the, the pulse of the people that I represent. And I told them in good faith long ago that the neighborhood was entirely against it. There wasn't one person for it. And so I would ask that this body vote on it today and deny the request.
And I believe that the attorney is online now, um.
I don't know, uh.
Al?
Is that working?
Yes, Corey, you're on.
You're on, Corey.
Okay, I, I, I apologize, uh, just had to download, uh, the app, and, uh, can, can everyone hear me?
I can see you as well, Corey.
Okay.
I can see.
I, uh, I, I apologize for, uh, delay and, and not appearing earlier. Uh, at this point, the, uh, petitioner was, uh, asking for additional continuance, uh, just to allow additional time to meet with, uh, the neighbors and try to address their concerns. If he's not able to do that, if he's not able to sway them, and, uh.
Jeff, lost again. Uh, what they're doing right now.
And the ward counselor, then he would withdraw the petition, and I want to assure everyone that, that would be the. They're not in favor, they would not.
What if that, something changed?
John, unmute yours if you're going to talk. It's Al. Okay, um, well, Corey, um, the ward counselor was just on here and stated that he'd like us to vote on this. He said in good faith that they're already, um, spoken to you regarding this, and it's, his opposition. I believe he's on here now, so he may be able to speak for himself.
I could gladly speak.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Corey Rhodes knows clearly the intention of what I had in mind, but representing the people, they, uh, to the person have asked me to have this petition denied. This has been going on for several months, and now the petitioner decides that he would like to meet with the neighborhood? I kind of think that that's just a stall tactic. I think that inevitable is, the neighborhood does not want any additional housing in that area because of the completely over congestion of, of cars and, and people, and, uh, and bear in mind, the closeness to the Parvius School. Uh, you can't get one car in or out of that area, and we're trying several methods now to, to change that. But to add insult to injury would be to approve this, because then we'd be adding to our problem. And I would just hope and pray that the zoning board would deny the request. And I think any further continuance would be just a, a futile effort in, in the process and delaying this, and delaying this any further. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. There is, uh, Corey did state, I'm, I'm not sure if you heard, a motion to withdraw without prejudice?
I, I, I had not, I had not heard that that was, uh, presented at this point. Hey, I, I would just like to repeat that, at this moment, we're not actually asking for it to be approved, we are simply asking for a continu- um, if, if that's not anything the board can allow in this particular circumstance we're dealing with. I mean, meeting with the neighbors in the midst of a, a global pandemic is really a little bit more difficult than, um, one would necessarily have had in the past, um, but if it's not within the board's pleasure to grant another continuance, then we would request that be, um, uh, allows to withdraw without prejudice. allows to withdraw without prejudice.
Allows to withdraw without prejudice.
I have no objection to allowing, to withdraw without prejudice.
Hey, what's the feeling of the members?
Michael, how many, how many times has this been addressed? Can I ask you that, Mike? I'm just curious, because I heard Arthur said numerous times this has been brought forward. And can you refresh my mind? Would you know? I don't have it written in front of me.
I believe this was maybe submitted in May or June of May, and it's been ongoing. Am I correct, Corey?
We, there, there was one hearing last month, which we asked for continuance after we found out there were concerns with the neighborhood. And this is the other second question.
You're saying to me this is your second time. Is that what you're saying, Corey?
Correct.
So then Arthur, all right, because Arthur's saying numerous times, Michael, so I'm just trying to get a feel on it, that's all. That's all I'm trying to figure out.
Good time, Arthur.
I think Arthur's going to speak.
I kind of suspect that this has been ongoing for several months. It started with site plan review, of which people were made aware of it by myself and other neighborhood people who presented it to them. We spoke with the neighborhood, and this pandemic has no bearing on this particular application because we're talking about an area that's impacted by the people, the people we can readily get a hold of, and they readily got a hold of me, and asked of me to ask of you to please deny their request. So the several times, meaning that not just before zoning board of appeal, it was before site plan review, and this was a few months in its, in taking. So there's been conversation ongoing for the past several months. Now I think it's more than fair that it be voted on, one way or another.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Arthur, if I'm not mistaken, wasn't it, wasn't it in front of site plan and review either in December or January, and they denied it?
Correct.
Because I have the letter and the paperwork.
That, that's just a traditional process that it goes through to even reach the zoning board. You have to get denied by site plan review. That's, that's the track.
That's why Arthur is saying that.
I hear ward, ward counselors' concerns. I have no desire to continue this against. I, I thought it was a reasonable request. Obviously, that was a mistake. I apologize for that. I, I guess we're really left with nothing else but to just withdraw it and request that it be done without prejudice.
I appreciate that, Corey.
Okay, so John, can you, can you unmute now? And I know you're speaking to Al.
I just explained to him what was going on.
Okay, so there is a, a request to can, to withdraw without prejudice.
The request is to withdraw without prejudice. Yes, okay, one moment.
Mr. Bichilli votes yes. Leave to withdraw without prejudice, Mr. D'Angelo.
Yes.
Yes, leave to withdraw without prejudice, Mr. Lopes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, leave to withdraw without prejudice is granted. No further business. If there is, I'll call you right back. All right.
All right, thanks.
Having no further business, our next meeting should be June 24th at 4:00 p.m. I believe that may be on a Zoom versus the go-to.
Good news.
Thank you, and have a good evening. Stay well, stay safe.
Thank you.
You as well. All righty.
Yep. Thank you.